Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to call this meeting of the Berlin-Boylston Regional School Committee's Budget Subcommittee to Order. So today, we're going to review the FY26 budget before the school committee votes on it on March 11th. And we are lucky enough to have the liaison from the Boylston Finance Committee here with us today to hopefully get a little bit more insight on where Boylston stands as far as what type of wiggle room we have so we can try to find somewhere to be aligned. That's the goal. All right. So we're gonna have, what we're gonna do, how we're gonna do this today is Aaron's gonna present. We'll hold questions till the end. And then, I kinda wanna look at this like as a working session. This is more of like a conversation so that we can be prepared for Tuesday. So that Tuesday, we go in and we can hopefully get the vote done. Obviously, things could and may change. I know we're on your agenda for March 17th, right?
I think that's right.
Yeah. And I don't know where Berlin stands. I think you said it's the same, almost maybe the same day.
Could be, yeah, I think it is.
I think it's the same day.
Yeah, they asked us for the same day, but yeah. It's gonna be hard.
Yeah, that'll be tough for you, yeah.
Two places at the same time.
Yep. So we can see what we need to do. And maybe we're in alignment here, and then I can go to Boylston and you guys can go to Berlin. So we'll figure that out after this. But I think today, the point is Aaron's gonna kinda go through this, give Karen the opportunity to ask some questions and see where we land, and then, you know, maybe see what else we need to do, if anything, before Tuesday. And when I say "we," I mean Aaron.
So really, I can add, Megan, if I could. So this is still a working document, right?
Right, exactly.
So we're trying to get this prepared for school committee on Tuesday. We put this publicly out there on the budget hearing. We're advertising that absolutely everywhere. But it's real important that our budget Subcommittee takes a look at this first, right? It gives us, is this the direction we wanna go, and even the format, right?
Yeah.
So this is not Aaron and I's first time presenting a budget. We've worked together for many years, and we've done this multiple times. But this is the way we're used to presenting it. So we want our feedback from the school committee, the budget school committee. So this way, when we go to Tuesday, we have everything in there that you feel like we need, and even the formatting of that as well, too.
Okay.
So it's our chance, after we present this, for school committee to ask us questions. And then we'll certainly have questions from other people as well, too. But making sure we have everything ready to go for Tuesday. So not only that, but ready to go for Friday afternoon. So when we post this, right, that we can put this in the drive so people have access to see this as well, too, ahead of time.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, awesome, thank you.
All right. Okay.
So I'm gonna run through, I think at the school committee meeting, we'll have more time. I'm gonna sort of run through each slide quickly, why it's there, what its purpose is, and just how we arrived at it. I won't get into all the nitty-gritty of all the calculations to the degree, but the bottom-line numbers will be there. I also wanna say, this is a working document. You will see some notes that say "updating." Those slides have not been updated to current numbers. There's some of the budget driver slides that I need to pull some data on. I also wanna say that the things like percents and things like that are to the best of my ability at this moment. I haven't gone through this three or four times yet. So, you know, there may be a fat finger here or there on things. And I just, you know, I wanna make sure that, you know, this is a working document. We're working together.
I left at 5:30 last night. I'm sorry, I left at 11:30 last night, and he came in at 5:30 this morning. So literally, that's where we're at. And this morning, we're still making changes. This is just, if you feel it, still want, right? Like, we're literally still gonna change it. So that's where we're at. So just appreciate that. Okay, I'll go.
Okay. So really quickly, I wanna, based on sort of some of our conversations, we've sort of tried to take, I guess the word might be a scalpel right now, to the budget, and dig through the cuts we feel like, you know, get us at least close to where the towns might need to be right now. So I just wanna be clear that what we're sharing right now is not a service-level budget. This is a below-service-level budget. We're making some cuts. We really try to keep those cuts as far from students as possible. But the challenge is, there's also the realization that there are things that will fall apart if we cut certain things. There are also positions that support positions. So, you know, if we were to, in the most extreme example, cut our payroll person, well, people wouldn't get paid. And that would make teachers very unhappy, which would make students unhappy. So, you know, there are domino effects that occur. So we really try to keep it away, but these are gonna impact operations in terms of what we have.
And the other part about that is, you know, people are gonna wanna ask us the specifics of those cuts, right? So we're not, I'm not at that spot yet to share that publicly. Because these are personnel issues, these are individual conversations that we have to have. And we need our employees to still be working from this day right now until June 15th. But those conversations will be happening. But the professional thing to do is for us to be having those conversations, and them not to hear them from a PowerPoint presentation or from someone who's watching this online right now. So we're gonna be respectful to that process as well.
We will add, we can, in aggregates.
That's right.
Yep.
Great.
So really quickly, you get, you know, maybe the 30,000-foot view of the budget in the very first slide. One of the things I wanna be clear about is, the budget that was approved by school committee in December is certainly significantly above the budget that was used to base the assessments. As people will recall, there were some changes, I think, made in the town of floor, the floor of town meeting that altered the assessments.
In Berlin.
In Berlin. And, you know, as Desi became involved with this whole process, they were pretty clear that we didn't, in their minds, we did not have a voted budget. Because that wasn't a formal vote of the school committee when that was done. So, you know, we had been operating at that point into December without a formal past budget. In their minds, we should've done a 1/12 budget. So we very quickly asked the school committee. I was looking at five or six versions of the budget, and it wasn't clear which version of the budget, if any, was used to make those decisions. So we went with what was in the system, with the understanding that we may not fully spend that, there may have been intended cuts, but we weren't able to capture those. So while this looks like a decrease, it may not be as much of a decrease. It may be a little bit more of a level, a level budget, as it were. I can't really speak to exactly what the intent was when that happened.
We were working with Department of Education, right? One of the communities brought it to attention, sent a formal letter to Department of Education. We were in the process, Aaron and I, of coming on board and still working on our logistics. But them involved with us brought us in the direction we need to go for here. And having this budget, using this number, and school committee did vote on that as well, too, in December.
So Aaron, that, thank you for that. That's a really, at least for me, I don't know if that's very clear as to why it looks like the change is actually going down. But the assessment for the budget, it looks like the change is going down. But the assessment might be higher.
Yep, that's correct. Yep, absolutely.
So I don't know, it doesn't really...
Right.
This is a big sticking point at the FinCom meetings for the last couple of weeks. It's been brought up, and I don't feel equipped to... So explaining that in detail would be...
So I'm gonna pause here for a second, because I, and I, we want us to go through, but I guess a lot of people had a hard time understanding that, right? So is there anyone that needs further clarification than that, right?
I understand. Well, maybe voted on it, I didn't necessarily fully, I understand it a lot more now than I did in December, a month into being on school.
We needed the number. We needed the budget that was voted on, right? So that we could work off that.
So I think our important ask, we don't end up on the floor of town meeting doing things like this, is that whatever budget is passed on March 11th can be amended, right? Within the 45 days.
Right.
But let's do it before we get to the floor of town meeting. Let's have those conversations. Let's have meaningful conversations about what wiggle room we have, where we can meet in the middle, what our options are. And then we could have a meeting on March 11th, and then April 1st, or, you know, some, whatever the first date in April is, we could have another meeting and vote a new budget. That's, you know, a fair way to think about that.
That's not good for anyone in this room, never mind the communities. If we're on the town floor, still working that stuff out, right? That's not, that's not a good look for any of us, right? And we made that promise not to have that happen again this year.
And so I guess my question in terms of clarification of this is, like, you know, voters, like, are just, they don't want to have more increases in their tax rate. And so this looks like, yay, like, we might actually, you know, not have that. Does this mean we can have these numbers but still have an increase in our taxes?
Yes, yes, you will see this increase to the assessment.
Starting with a different number than we're starting with.
The starting number is just a higher number. So all those numbers that get taken out, Chapter 70, school choice, circuit breaker money that comes out of it, doesn't take as much, obviously doesn't take as much out, doesn't bring it down as far, because your starting point is higher. It's, unfortunately, I could not find, and there were five different versions of the budget in various places, and I just couldn't come to something that was like an actual budget while, you know, trying to close '24, pay bills, get this budget ready. We just had to make some decisions about what was gonna happen.
So will voters know what their increase will be on their taxes?
You will see, you will see the assessment increases here.
Okay.
And, you know, as I said, my hope is, you know, the school committee, if I vote this in March, and the towns may come back and say, well, you know, this is higher than we'd hoped, and we can have some reasonable conversations. And then the school committee might vote a different budget that might be a little lower. You know, we may make some cuts. The school committee may decide to put in a little more resources, like, there's a school choice account we could draw from. You know, at the meeting, you know, I would definitely wanna speak to responsible use of things like school choice, which is really a rainy-day fund. But I would argue that it's raining a bit, right? And this is an opportunity to say, let's steady the ship, let's figure things out. If we have to have conversations about, with the towns, about how do we move forward with this, if money isn't going up, what do we need to do? There's a conversation there, right?
And now might not be the time, I'll say anyways, there's a big piece that we're not sure of here, right? We're in the middle of contract negotiations, right? So that's just that. And so, on top of all this, and I'm sure you're aware of what's taking place across the state, right, with MTA, and teachers' unions and stuff, and the numbers they're coming in at, which we can't share at this time in executive session, obviously. But that's a big thing we have to, we have to figure out as well, too. So we're just being mindful of that as well, what we're budgeting for that, and what they're asking as well, too, so.
Just one quick question, Aaron. I mean, at some point, maybe in this presentation, maybe I'm jumping the gun. Am I gonna be able to see it in the format that we presented and voted on?
Yeah, pretty much.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
It's hard to understand that, like, there's some of the increases.
Yeah, that's sort of the finish line.
My numbers don't matter. For the assessment, I don't know, so Boylston was kind of, a lot of what you're speaking to pertains to Berlin. Boylston gave us a number, we hit the number.
Correct.
We were in alignment with FinCom 100% of the way. It was a very simple and quiet town meeting, mostly about dogs and other things. But yeah, it wasn't about the school budget. It was a very straightforward, I think, the assessment and the budget should tie for Boylston. So I feel like maybe that's something, you know, after the meeting, you know, now, I don't know if you had met Aaron before, but he's so easy to work with.
Way back.
Way back to December.
Yeah. You can shoot him an email, and like, if you have questions on specific, because I know you guys have your spreadsheets, and you try to fill in, and you get the aspect stuff. So I think that should tie out your budget with the Boylston budget and your assessment. I think that was all kind of, because none of that ever changed.
Right.
It should, it would just be the total. And, you know, maybe Tohonto, so maybe a little, but I, like, your capital and stuff like that, that should be fine. None of that changed at all. So I think maybe, like, offline, instead of, you know, sitting here and spending, yeah.
If I see it in the presentation, I can just get in touch with him.
He could absolutely get you whatever detail you need to fill in for your spreadsheets, and then, yeah, go from there.
And what we're hoping, what you described in Boylston, which we're here, probably didn't happen last year, maybe in Berlin, we're hoping that will be smooth that way this year, right? That's sort of what we're used to, right?
Hopefully, yeah.
We used to go to Hamden, Wilbraham, and they spent four hours on chickens, right? No exaggeration. And yet, 20 minutes on the school budget, because the work we're doing ahead of time going up to the floor is all done. So that it should be a no-brainer, that we go in there and vote, and maybe we're no surprise for that.
Sounds good.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
So the next slide gets into how everything's broken down by cost center. One thing that's a little new this year is I've broken out district-wide costs. So that's the superintendent, myself, the director of special education. Nothing changes in terms of how it's assessed. We are assessing it the same, but we're calling it out because it really is its own cost center. And public accounting really expects that you're going to manage things by cost center. So principals, for example, the principal of Berlin Memorial really is the controller of his budget for the most part, within parameters, right? They own their budget there, they have authorization, but not for those district-wide costs, right? So the superintendent's pieces, things like that. So we're just trying to call that out so people see that as a separate amount, and they understand what that overhead looks like as well. So it's not buried in the schools.
And how does that get split between the two towns?
I actually have a slide on that, but I will...
Questions at the end, I wouldn't say that.
Okay, I'll get to it. One of the items we were asked to do, one of the things we were asked to do is to break things down a little bit more by line items. So each one of those cost centers is now broken down by sort of major line item. You know, we don't get into every salary and every, but these are the major sort of cost breakdowns. This also aligns with, there is some reporting expectations in the regional agreement. This, coupled with some of the later slides, complies fully with, I believe, those expectations within the regional agreement. So I won't dwell on each item. I mean, go ahead and peruse it, if you have questions about them, you can get back to me. A little further down, we have a graph. So this sort of explains where our money is being spent. You'll see that big brown piece, I'm sorry, there's a big pie chart. I didn't go over every single cost center, I just thought that might be a little redundant. I think it's fair to let people know where they're spending their money. The vast majority of our money is spent in instruction, and the vast majority of that money is salaries. You will see some other costs that directly relate to students that, in many cases, we really don't have much choice on. You know, health services, we have to have nursing, we need to have that support. Transportation, we have to transport students. Activities and athletics, you know, to what degree you can ever cut athletics is always a challenge. You know, custodial and utilities, the lights need to be on, the schools need to be clean, we don't really have a choice. Benefits and insurance, that's health insurance. I think I've shared that both of our health insurances, retiree and general employee health insurance, has gone up by 18% this year. That's a big driver in this. Tuitions, most of these are students on IEPs who are in out-of-district placements. Some of this is also school choice costs. So when students' school choice out, we have no control over any of those costs. Those are sort of baked in. You'll see district-wide administration, and then school administrations, and school administrations' principals. Al and I are examples of district-wide administration. So then, we get into the million-dollar question that was just asked. So the regional agreement itself doesn't say anything about the allocation of district-wide costs. However, past practice that has existed since this region was a union before the development of the region was that each of the elementary schools was allocated 25%, and Tohonto was allocated 50%. You know, that's, unfortunately, with a regional agreement that's silent, I did call Rob Conry, who was in my position back when the regional agreement was founded. He was very clear that when they made it a region, they continued what they'd been doing. So this has been going on, it hasn't changed. What I'm doing is no different from what's been done.
And then that 50% gets split by the allocation for that.
By the allocation of Tohonto, so, yeah. So then, as we're looking at the budget, these next slide represents offsets that are built into the budget. So these are built into the budget, you've already seen, but these are helping reduce the budget. So we're proposing to allocate 850,000 of school choice. We take in around $450,000 of school choice. One of the challenges we're dealing with right now is that our E&amp;D probably won't be certified in time for budget. But I would expect that we would have a couple hundred thousand dollars in E&amp;D available to support the budget that wouldn't be in here. So I'm pretty comfortable putting a little extra, yes, fingers crossed. I'm comfortable putting a little extra school choice. We have the balance, as I stated, it is raining. In the past two years, the school district has not used much school choice at all. So that balance has built up. So it's reasonably appropriate to say, okay, now might be a good time to spend it down a little bit and use what we have.
And Aaron, just normally, E&amp;D would be certified by now, correct?
Yes.
No, they wouldn't. So we're just, we're trying to catch up a little bit, right? So we're trying to get this worked on.
We usually review the audit in our early February or late January meetings, but...
Yeah, just, we just wanna make sure. And for the public, right, that we're having this, moralize what's taking place here as well.
Yeah.
So circuit breaker, I explain each of these items in the next few slides, so I won't jump on them yet. And then our IDEA grant fund. So those help offset the budget as well. We do have some other very small grants that I'm not delving on. So we get a very small amount of Title I funds. Sometimes we get some 274 grant funds, there's no reason anybody should know what those are. But those are typically used to offset the budget a little bit, 5,000 here, 10,000 there. I don't feel like they're big enough to delve into here. A few explanations about school choice and circuit breaker. And then the IDEA grant on the next slide. I won't delve into it, but if anyone has questions on these sort of explanations, really feel free to reach out to me.
Take a look at that school choice definition. We know that's been a question that's been asked.
I see it in writing.
Yep, so we, we moralize that. We talked to Katie Manalte, our attorney for special education, she gave us guidance on it as well, too. So we know that you guys wanted it somewhere, right? And we wanted to make sure we're putting that in the presentation as well, too.
And at the bottom, you will see, at the bottom, below IDEA grant, you will see I've explained how the regional agreement deals with these items. So it's in italics down here below IDEA grant, so...
Page 7, we're still at 7.
Yes, 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 yes. Not, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, page 7, the top slide. So all of the budget offsets that I've described, so that is school choice, circuit breaker, and the IDEA grant. The regional agreement indicates that all grant and other district funds shall be apportioned to school budgets by the district at the district's discretion. So what we've endeavored to do, and I can share that as needed, is employ these in an equitable manner, either sort of equally to the way, say, district office costs are assessed, right? So 25, 25, 50, or what have you. Or in the case of circuit breaker, sometimes relative to the numbers, most of our circuit breaker, virtually all of our circuit breaker comes from those out-of-district students. So it's relative to the number of out-of-district students and the overall cost of out-of-district students. And that, you know, in each school will go up and down year to year, and you try to equitably manage that in a way that helps sort of offset those costs that are completely uncontrollable and challenging to deal with. I think in most cases, it's been done, what I've got is pretty equally split. So it's, I think it's pretty, pretty close to equal, even aside from equitable, right? The difference between those terms is a little, little different, but there's some nuance there. So then we get into, what are we using to support the assessment? So when we're through with that budget bottom line, there are a number of items that go into reducing the assessments to the town. Now, all of these have basically the same effect, but they're just put in different places, right? So assessment offsets, we have Chapter 70, Chapter 71, which is reimbursement for transportation. We get some Medicaid reimbursement money, and we get some interest income. So those are used to offset the actual assessments themselves. In the next few slides, I explain each of these items and how the regional agreement treats them, which is how I've treated them. There is a little bit of, you know, maybe nuance in the regional agreement that I speak to at times, but pretty much, I've tried to follow this. So Chapter 70 is that major aid from the state. It's based on student counts and relative wealth of the communities in terms of how much you receive. So you can see, there's a couple steps to how Chapter 70 is allocated. It tracks with minimum local contribution, changes a minimum local contribution, which track to foundation enrollment, which is a whole separate calculation unto itself. So there's a number of things that are calculated off of each other. So there's step one, which carries through to the same percentages. But if you apply those same percentages to the increases, you're left with a little leftover. So then you have to go to step two, do a second calculation to calculate how those have been apportioned. I have done that. So then, down to Chapter 71, that's a little simpler. That gets into specific student counts in each school. So we keep October 1st numbers for the state. And from each town, this is literally how it's written in the regional agreement, but that B-O-R-E, B-M-R-E, and B-B-R-E, those are just the number of town students, Berlin or Boylston, in each school. So Boylston, that's the total number of Boylston students at Boylston Elementary divided by the total number of students from both towns in the region. Right? So you add up all three components, that's all students in the region, divided. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah, this is like a true allocation, because you're doing it by student, which is probably how everything should be done.
Yep. And, yeah, so I, when we talk about the regional agreement and how I would envision things, this might be closer to where I sort of envisioned how it would also be more transparent, right? This is pretty self-evident in our October 1st numbers.
Yep.
Some of these other calculations are harder to get to. So it doesn't change the spirit, and that these numbers are very close to the foundation numbers. It's, you add in a few charter students and choice students to get the foundation numbers, and it's a very tedious process. And students are wily, and that they tend to move around a little bit. So you always have one or two students, you're never gonna be able to track that one and figure out, so.
So this is...
We're doing the best we can.
I'm just clarifying that this, Chapter 71, is based on only Boylston kids, only Berlin kids at these two, three schools.
Yes, yes.
Not the school choice kids.
No, does not include them.
So one of the things that's been asked of Aaron and I is about this, does, can we reduce the number of kids? We don't see all kids taking the bus all the time, and can we get smaller buses? I'm just sharing questions that have been brought to our attention. So one of the things about being a regional school district is you have to be able to provide transportation for all the students. That's how we get that reimbursement. So even though a Beth is not using it every single day, and then on January 3rd, her mother says, I wanted her to stop and take the bus.
Yeah.
We have to, and she lives within that distance away, we have to make sure we're providing transportation. So it's not like we can do in some private schools, right where I came from, Megan's not using the bus, she says, I'm not using, so we're not gonna stop at that stop anymore. So I just wanna clarify that for that transportation piece. We have to make sure that every student has a seat on that bus as a regional.
And I think the routes can't be longer than an hour, right? So if you have, like, if you're like, oh, just put them on that bus, well, if the routes go over like 61 minutes, then you have to split that to two routes, right?
Yeah, correct. We could be asked to do that, yep.
And this was a question that Heidi and Mary had asked also, behind the scenes. And I said, I knew there was a reason, but there was something to do with regional schools that we are required to give them.
Yes, we are required. We get reimbursed for...
Oh, she missed it.
There you go.
Sorry.
No problem, we can pull up the chair.
I had a piece of work that I was...
We're on, yeah.
Okay. This is like work I had to move around.
Sure, absolutely, have a seat.
So we can catch you up after, maybe?
Sure.
Okay. So we're on page nine, moving on to page nine. So page nine has a quick explanation of Medicaid and interest. It appears that, again, the regional agreement is silent to these items. So looking back at past practice, these have always been applied to the Tohonto assessment. So by virtue, it does get split according to the assessment to the towns, right? So I think that's probably, if something is silent, it might be the best thing to try to keep it in Tohonto, right? So I think that's probably, if something is silent, it might be the best thing to try to keep it in Tohonto, right? Because that splits things like that, so some of these things. And if you don't know what past practice was or what have you. So minimum local contribution, that's another factor, we take that out of things first. This is where you really get into the formula allocations. This is the foundation enrollment piece. This is, so there's description of them, not going to dwell on that. The regional agreement allocates minimum local contribution in accordance with foundation enrollment figures. These are the ones that sort of take a lot to calculate and figure out, but it does use a five-year moving average, which helps smooth some of those changes out, variations. My assumption has been, and it looks like that's the case, that the above minimum local contribution, again, that the regional agreement is sort of silent to this, but the above minimum local contribution costs have been done at a five-year moving average as well. So again, that smoothes out, smoothes out big changes. A, it's very typical of most regional agreements to have a five-year moving average of some sort. And if you're going to do it with the MLC component, there's almost no sense in not doing it for the rest, right? You're doing that whole, that whole piece by a five-year moving average, it smoothes things. In the long run, it doesn't really change anything, but it makes it a little easier when there's big adjustments. So in prior, prior versions, I've shared these key drivers. You'll see that in red, I put updating, these are not updated figures, but I've left them in just so you see that we will be addressing these items, and I will be updating these prior to when we post this on Friday. So then, the next slide, the bottom of the slide.
So this is the one that we looked at last time?
Yeah, you've seen this in the December version and the February version. These are here, will, the numbers just need to be updated, right? These are still the major drivers, they're pretty significant.
Yeah.
But we'll need to just update those numbers.
As we said when we started, I mean, this is still a working document, right? Until Friday afternoon, when we post this, we're still making the decisions we need to make to make sure we're prepared.
Yeah. The next gets into the specific components of the operating assessment for Berlin Memorial. And then page 11, you have exactly the same two slides for Boylston, right? So you've got, these haven't changed from the December. The, the numbers have changed, but the format hasn't changed, the same format. We're trying to stay consistent with that, but you will see the numbers have changed. So those have decreased significantly. We will get to the percent increases and things like that in a few slides.
Wait, Aaron, so your assessment calculations have the new budget numbers?
Yes.
But your, the drivers are the old, okay, got you.
Yes. The, 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 the slides that are being updated have the updating in red, so I haven't, I'm in the process of updating them, so those aren't valid figures to use.
But that's the bottom slide.
But the bottom slide, so for Karen and Mary, yeah. Those are the numbers we're voting on.
And by the way, this is the first time that we're sharing this out with School PD, right? So this is the first round, that's why we're here with the budget stuff, for them to give us some feedback on that as well, too.
Yeah, so by page 12, we get into Tohonto. Same format at the top, what are our key drivers? Down below, the Tohonto operating assessment is a little more complicated, because you have both towns involved in that. So you have, you start with the budget, you add the district share, you get the total budget, you take out Chapter 70, 71, and charter, that's charter reimbursement, as well as interest, I should mine that out, I apologize. So that would be the total amount being assessed to the towns, is that $11,286,688. And then the next slide, at the top of page 13, breaks it out by town. I apologize, that green is a little challenging, it's a little dark. But I tried to highlight Berlin's components in green and Boylston's in yellow, just to kind of help people, because this gets a little difficult to look at as we play. So we get into those, both of those minimum local contributions that then feed into the above minimum contribution amount, that then is split by the two towns, right? So everyone's accountable for their own minimum contribution share, and then their share of the above minimum contribution in accordance with the regional agreement formula that I shared before. That kind of makes sense? Okay.
So Aaron, this does not include any capital?
Capital's coming.
Okay.
We'll get the capital, yep. So.
But doesn't one of the towns use something from capital in their assessment? Was it Berlin? I can't remember, Mary? Tohonto capital in their assessment?
Well, you just look at the definitions that are next to the numbers and then take it from there. So we got instruction, Berlin historically has always voted these things separately.
Yes.
And so we got some guidance from Desi that really you should just vote the entire number, but in the budget presented to the town in the warrant, you can list it out separately, which we do.
Okay.
And our approval process for capital and operating are different. You know, there's a capital planning committee. And this year is further complicated, because we, we, like you, are struggling with some financial records, doing an audit. And so we don't have our end of the year wrap-up to give us a free cash number, so we don't know. And our guidelines say you spend about 30% of your, your free cash you can, that's a guideline, towards capital projects, so we don't know what those numbers are yet.
Fair.
Right, that's a.
That's sort of.
That's to be, yeah, and so.
What E and D?
I feel your, I feel your pain as you, as you try to take, you know, take last year's numbers in there.
I'm glad you appreciate that.
Well, you know, the, the calendar isn't, isn't helpful this year for either the district or the town of Berlin. But we'll do the best we can with it.
Okay.
So the next slides get into the total operating assessments for each town, and I think this gets into the first part of maybe some of what we were asking for, the numbers broken down. So the very first is the Berlin Memorial Assessment, the MLC component of Tohonto, and then the above MLC component, getting to a total operating assessment to Berlin based on this budget of $8,376,875. That represents an increase of $575,439, about a 7.38% increase. You know, that, we, we understand that's a pretty, still a pretty big increase. That is down from more than 15% in our first round, so we've been kind of continuing to pull that down. And, and again, topic of conversation. Boylston. Boylston had some, some things that sort of naturally helped the budget this year. They, they lost some out-of-district placements. They actually went up, many of them, whom went up, some of whom went up to Tohonto. So those costs ended up becoming share costs, which then impacted Berlin a little bit. And that happens vice versa, right? Some years Berlin may have students go up to Tohonto, and then those get split. So Boylston Elementary, a total assessment of $4,945,000. You have the Tohonto MLC, the Tohonto above minimum local contribution, and then a total operating budget of, that's not right.
One of those two isn't right.
That's not, that number isn't right, because it's identical.
The one in the middle?
Yeah, it's the same number, I apologize. Like I said, I.
That's okay, you can read it like that. That would be just fine.
There's some fat fingers in here. The increase is truly the $495,746, I recall that. So you could add for a 4.18% increase. I can have that number before you leave if you need it. Again, I apologize.
And hence the reason why this is what we're doing, right? Bringing in front of budgets up, right? And looking at it and making sure we have all those final things before we bring it through.
Yeah, this is the point of this meeting, yep.
That's right.
Yep. So then we start getting into debt and capital. So one of the things some of you may be aware of is, the past two years, there has been an error in the capital assess, in the, in the debt assessment. So the debt assessments that were provided to the towns were short by around $250,000 combined, so that ended up being split. The district ended up picking up those costs, so that's about $500,000 of costs that the district inherently has ended up picking up.
Excuse me, Aaron, in the fiscal '24 numbers, was there also a missing interest payment in those numbers? So you have two years running.
Twenty-four and twenty-five, yes.
And is the 250 both years or one year?
That's one year.
One year, so it's just the 25, fiscal 25.
From both towns, yeah.
Both towns, right, okay.
So this corrects for that, so I understand, you know, people may, may see an increase in that and wonder what that comes from. Interestingly, there is some, some inherent variation, because debt is allocated the same, for Tohonto is allocated using the same foundation formula, which is a little different, most districts I've seen and been in. When they have debt, they lock the percentage at the time the debt was incurred. So if you were 75% 25, it would remain 75, 25 for the life of that payment. You know, this, it is what it is, our numbers don't shift that drastically because of the five-year moving average. But in terms of anticipating the next 20 years of that bond, right? It might be a little more challenging for the towns if numbers do shift over time.
But it's important to have you both here, right, from both towns and both communities, because when we put this out on Friday, right? So we're putting it on our district website, we're making sure we're pushing it and advertising it, so everyone's aware. When people look at page 14, right, and see that second slide about the debt, they're going to ask those questions, like, why, why is that difference taking place there, right? So that you are knowing that story, because we're not really out publicly giving that information out. But obviously we are now, but it will be important for you guys to help tell that story, like, this is the reason why.
I believe we shared this at the last meeting.
Yeah, I think we did too.
Yeah, we've been talking about it, and then we, we saw the two debt schedules, which was helpful to see that, too.
Yeah.
And I'm curious, kind of, this is a little side, but it looks like the, the one little bump in the amount may have to do with not making the, with the interest payments missing from the previous couple of years, I don't know.
Yes, so there's a.
There's one outlier.
There's like an outlier interest payment, yes.
Yeah, and, okay, so that's.
It's an April payment, I think.
Exactly, okay.
Yep, it's that April payment that seems to have been missed.
Yep. And interesting from both communities, right, that were, were, that didn't catch this, right? And didn't say, hey, we didn't have, but now that you have a schedule, right? And so I think it'll be a little bit easier.
Yeah. I get to the register of Stop and Shop, and it seems they've missed something, I don't always jump up and let them know. So, you know.
No, you notice they turn twice.
But appreciate, this is a big figure, you know, when you're looking at.
It is a big figure.
When you're looking at both communities, right?
It's a big figure.
And we're making difficult decisions that Aaron and I and our principals are making, right? That's a, that's a big figure, so. Appreciate that.
So some of the feedback we received on the capital requests is that, that towns would like to see a ranked order of things. So these are in priority order if you're looking at the capital items. A couple things, I know that, for example, you know, Berlin is expressing that full capital amount when they're talking about sort of increases. We're not expecting to get this full amount, but I, I think it's important for us to be clear when we talk about the needs of the school. And we talk about, say, in the long-term unfunded capital. And, and this is, I think this is something that hopefully the towns can share in as well. When we go to the state, for example, or MSBA, and we're talking about funds, we should be tracking how much unfunded capital there is, right? And then, you know, if we can't fund, say, replacing the roof and something happens, right? How we, how we explain that is important, right? What have you, we've asked for this X number of times, the towns wanted to do it, but there's no funding available. What, what's a mechanism for this? Like, how do we work together to maybe go to the state? So I guess what we're hoping for is an opening of a conversation with the towns around what they think they might be able to do around, say, Berlin, Boylston. Boylston's got the roof going on, so that's a really big one. That's one of the reasons, you know, their number might be a little smaller right now. You know, Tohonto as well. You know, I think when you go to Tohonto, there were some questions about that middle school furniture number, right? That is to replace all of the middle school furniture. If the towns were to come back and say, you know, we can give you probably X dollars to help with the furniture. The challenge is that middle school furniture is elementary school sized, and there are many middle school students who are my size. I've sat in those chairs, and it is challenging. I've not had to sit in them all day in multiple classes, I've sat in them for 10 minutes maybe. And they're kind of fun for 10 minutes. But all day would be a little grating. But we do have some students who aren't my size, right? So it's reasonable to say, if we had the ability to even change out some of that for the students who are growing more, right? Who are in a place where they need bigger furniture. You'll also notice, we've, we've tried to sharpen our pencil on a few items. There are a few items, so student device replacement, this was a much higher number. We rolled in last year's number because it wasn't approved, but we also then sat down and we went through, our new director, Joseph Passado, IT director, went through every single item and looked at what do we need to replace? Where is it in its life cycle? And we've come to a much lower number.
And he has a full five-year plan, what he's working on right now, that he'll be presenting to School PD about technology, changing all those computers, not only for students, but also for faculty as well, too. So we're really.
A very well thought out plan.
Yes, yes.
He's got a real solid plan.
So, can I, wait, I'm so sorry, just.
Go ahead, Alan.
No, ladies first, please, sorry.
We, we had talked a little bit about devices and whether or not they belonged in operating or capital.
Yep.
Did you all resolve what you're thinking about that? Because it's sitting in capital now, I think it is for the other schools.
I guess my question is, that would increase, so if we were to put that $100,000 in operations, that would change our operating.
I, I get it. But it's really a matter of.
Yes.
Of the principal, how do you, how do you?
Yes.
And, and.
So it's a great conversation that we'd want to have with Joe and with both communities, sitting at the table, right? And figuring out how we're going to, where we're going to put that.
Yeah, it frees up things that are actually critical capital projects, right? So, and it makes you think about the operating, because this is a recurring expense, and each device is not, you know.
I think it'll be important to see his complete five-year plan and how he's planning on rolling that out as well, too. I, I gotta just go back to, as well, to, although we're prioritizing these, we used the example this morning, like, this is, like, these are our homes, right? We got to take care of them, so we're choosing that we got to do this, but please know you're going to, if we don't fund five, six, seven, and eight, you'll see those next year still being on the list, and that's the thing that we're going to be working on. There are things like Aaron has said that need to be done, the elevated controls, because we don't be able to open our schools if that's not working. But my, my priority as superintendent is cameras, right? We truly need exterior cameras on, on our schools for not only the safety of our kids outside during the day, but also we're starting to see some night activity taking place in our schools, right? That have been brought to my attention, so we really need to have. And that's Joe's working on that, working with a company to ensure that as well, too, so.
So back to the devices, though, and putting them in operations, if I can just maybe close the door on that. That would be my preference. I mean, that way we're not coming back every single year for very similar numbers, because we're going to develop a five-year plan that, that means every year we're going to spend roughly the same amount of money. But that's going to mean that the budget's going to go up. I can't cut a teacher in favor of adding devices to Tohonto, right? So that's 100,000 is certainly the cost of a teacher. So I, we need a commitment from the towns to be able to do this. In the past, we had, the district I was in where we did this, is we happened to have a bit of a windfall in the sense that we had a fairly significant out-of-district move-out that saved us about equivalent money, and we were able to sort of forklift that right in. That's not the case right now.
Sure.
So it, 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 it's, to me, one town could decide to do that, because you have your elementary schools and you're both accountable. If you have a good year and you feel like that's something you could put in, we could put into operations, we can do that, and then we can wait on the other town, and we can wait on Tohonto, or vice versa. But I, I just want to be mindful of, like, I don't know if any of us is comfortable cutting a math teacher to move those from capital to operations. So I'm sorry.
No, that's all right.
Does that, does that sort of close the loop on that a little bit?
Sure, if there's a year where there's an opportunity to jump in and make the shift, then it makes sense to do it.
Sure, yeah.
We'll, I hope, look for that kind of year.
And we'll keep talking about it every year, because I think it's the right thing to do.
You buy them every year, right? So that's, that's my point.
And they're too small to be capital.
Buy them every year, they should be in the budget, yeah. Yeah, what you could start doing is maybe setting aside like a smaller amount in the operating budget each year, so then you're setting up almost like a reserve fund for technology, because we all know it's something that we're going to have forever. And so in order to soften the blow to the taxpayers, instead of just adding in another, you know, 200,000 or whatever in one year, you start with like maybe 30,000. So I mean, but I, I don't know that this is the year to.
And I'd still want to make sure that we have that understanding with the towns.
Yeah.
That this is what we're mindfully doing.
Yeah.
Right, so we're not just adding, we're not just adding 30,000 willy-nilly, we're adding 30,000, and it would come out of capital, right? We, so that 100,000, if it was Tohonto, would be 70,000.
Yeah.
And each time we do that.
And just to be clear about the computers, right? So one of the things you need to know is, we have enough devices for every single student in our district. We, we just don't have a, a, a plan, right? And that's what Joe's working on, I think he started sharing that with you, right? Like, what are those older computers that we're going off? And what are the new computers that we want to bring on?
And that's what this comes.
That's, yes, that's the piece of it. So we want to make sure our students have the current devices, not, by the way, that's not just. And that, by the way, that's not just computers. When Joe's talking about his plan, it's also about some of the other technology that we want to have in our buildings as well too. So there's another piece of that.
Sure.
Servers, switches.
Yes, understood, yep.
Does that kind of make some sense?
It, it does. I see Todd, it was not looking to put in cameras, I assume that we.
I was just gonna ask that.
We have them already.
Get the words out of my mouth.
So that was something you funded, I believe.
We did it last year.
Yes, absolutely.
We see some vigilons right outside the front entrance.
And by the way, what will happen with all these, once we have them all, they'll all be synced. So that either at central office or in our phones, we're going to be able to see that, God forbid, something was happening, right? Emergency-wise, right? The last time we had an emergency in the district, you know, I, I went over to that site, right? And, and they don't want us at those sites. They want us to be able to give direction and that will all be web-based, so we'll be able to see what's taking place. If there's emergency, but also just to keep track of what's taking place on our devices as well too. It's important.
Yeah.
Okay?
So getting through those, the bottom of, of page sixteen, you get into the debt assessment plus the capital. You have your elementary capital items, you have your Tohonto capital shares. Those are in accordance with the regional agreement. That's similar to the foundation enrollment piece. It's all broken out the same way for total capital assessments. Again, I, I, I want to just, you know, make sure it's really clear for everyone at home. We're not expecting that Berlin is coming up with two point one million dollars for capital, right? The debt really needs to be paid, but the one point three million dollars in Berlin capital, we, we, the plan is that, that hopefully we can engage in a conversation about where Berlin thinks it is. We've met with the capital committee. Uh, we did share our priorities with them and we've prioritized it here so that it's very clear to both towns sort of what, what we really think are the, the important things to get done.
The, the last piece, and I, I think Mary might have missed it at the beginning, is the, the part that we're not, that's part of this, this presentation, but we're in the middle of negotiations, right? So I just want to make sure everyone's clear about that, right? Can't stress us or not, that's what's keeping us up at night, right? And, um, because that is a figure that's unknown to us right now.
Yep. So at least for the time being, um, you know, sort of as the towns maybe sharpen their pencils, look at the numbers here. You know, our, our hope is that this is what we can bring forward to school committee on March eleventh. With the understanding that the towns may get back to us and we may need to have some conversations about what that looks like. And we're with some expediency trying to resolve those matters and not make these decisions on the floor of town meeting, but have votes, maybe another vote in April if needs be, if that's where we need to be. So we, does that seem fair?
To lower it, we can't go higher.
Yeah, we, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to go higher.
So we shouldn't, so the, the vote on March eleventh should be the highest, so that's, you know.
Agreed, yeah. So respectfully to, to school committee first, because this is a, a budget sub. We, we want to share this with you and then we'll certainly open it up, Meg, you know, as, as chair. But is there something you, 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 you're thinking that we need to add? Something that we're missing? Again, this is not our first time doing this work, but it's the first time doing it for Berlin-Boston. So we want to make sure if there's something that you need us to answer, right? We've got a lot of feedback from a lot of people on school committee, so we wanted to make sure we, we put that all in there. That's why it is, you know, we're not used to being this many slides, right? We're used to about ten previously. So we put a lot of information to give some people some information, some history, um, some about whether it be school choice. So we put that all in there so it can be memorialized. Um, but is there something we're missing? Something you want more clarity on? Here's a chance for us to hear from school committee so that, that then we're ready for it, to put this online on Friday. So people can get their questions in preparation for Tuesday. And then I'll defer it to the both towns of Berlin-Boston, say, what are we missing as well too?
And to just dovetail on what Al said, um, it is, is our intent to add some information on the sorts of cuts we're proposing. I know Al said we don't want to share specific positions at this moment, just given that we're dealing with people and things like that. But, but the intent is to have those conversations, um, and make the proper preparations to do that. So we're hesitant to do that right away, but we certainly will have some information on the specific cuts, the areas of those cuts.
Areas, not specific positions, yep.
So would we do that in executive session before we vote? Or are we just gonna?
I mean, our, our point is, what we've done in the past is we'll give you a number. It's just a general ballpark, like what areas it's going to be in, but not specific positions. Because it does have an impact, right? People's contracts, people's security, right? Bumping, or, or there's a lot of things that we need to take into account, um, so.
No, I get that, but I think, uh, before, at least the school committee is voting, it's hard to vote blindly on. I know I'm voting on cuts, but I don't know what cuts specifically.
Yep.
And then to be responsible for that. I'm just more looking at like, as we know, you know, the school committee, the shoulders are the responsibility. Where you guys decided to do this, but we don't know specifically what we're cutting.
Sure.
So I don't know if there's a way to maybe have that discussion in some type of executive session before we actually vote.
Yep. Have you done that in the past?
We've never had to make cuts like this, or at least on my time on the school committee. So I don't know how, um, last year when there were proposed cuts, um, but we, they were, they listed the cuts out in public session.
Sure, sure.
I, I agree, I don't know necessarily think that was the right way to do it. So it was almost like they were threatened cuts, because we weren't sure what was gonna happen, um, until after town meeting.
Please know, like, these, these aren't, the, the moves we're making, right? Are not just sort of high in the sky. These are what we've got to get to this number, right? So this is what, with the work that we really had to do, um, in making sure that, you know, that there's, there's some credibility with, with each one of these cuts.
Yeah.
Our, our moves we made, not necessarily cuts.
Right, because last year it was more like, we're cutting all the art teachers.
That's right.
So then all the art teachers are now looking for, it's not the same situation.
Yeah.
And.
Well, it is, it's just that we're not gonna announce what the cuts are, so that's what I'm saying.
But those were more broad. These are like.
We're not making sweeping cuts.
He's made really targeted looking.
Yeah, I, I think it's mostly to have time to have conversations with people.
That's right.
Um, so it might be that shortly thereafter, we could have a conversation about where those, and if the school committee disagreed, you can move money around freely. That's, that's school committee's prerogative, so we could have some conversations about.
I will never do like those sweeping cuts, right? But I think that's sort of a, probably inappropriate, like a weak move when you say arts are gone, right? All sports are gone, everyone comes to your meetings and then we bring it back. I want to be able to make sure these cuts that are decisions that we're making are mindful and very specific so that we could, you know.
So they had specific positions on the board last year during the meeting.
Really?
Yes, the recess day in Berlin Memorial, that was one of them, you know, I, you know, it was elementary art. There's one elementary art teacher district-wide. So it was, it was pretty specific, but it was like, I know, you know, they had us sit down and they spoke with the teachers and they got pink slips before town meeting. So it was, it was just publicized. So I guess the question is, this year, do we do it in executive session? Because I think the school committee members were aware of what we were voting on or what would happen. We didn't vote to make the cuts, right? We voted on the higher budget and then we were waiting to see what happened at town meeting. So it was a different situation in that school committee was voting, no, we, we don't want to make any cuts, we're keeping this budget. But if it doesn't pass town meeting, these are the positions that will be cut. And it was literally listed out on a slide and put up. So I agree with the way you want to do it this year. I just think that before voting on a budget that has cuts, we need to be aware of, that, that would be my only thing. I think this is a good, um, a, a really, I, I thought this was very comprehensive, easy to understand. Um, understanding, yeah, these capital requests might be, maybe not Boylston Elementary. I can't imagine Berlin's gonna come up with that much cash. I think that's a pipe dream. Um, but without going to the capital meeting and hearing what they had, the assessment, I don't know if they need the, if you need to compare the prior year assessment, if that's something that you can get in a spreadsheet.
Yeah, we can work on that after the meeting.
And I don't know if Mary needs that as well for Berlin, but I thought this was very well done.
I do have. Yes, go ahead.
I do have one other component, which we, we talked about last year. And that is for our town, we need the vocational tuition and, and transportation for Assabet.
Do they come and present to you at all, Assabet?
No, we need, yeah, so they're not a partner in us.
That's right, I know that.
They need, yeah.
So, so just to, to maybe clarify, um, Assabet comes to us because we are a member town in the Assabet group.
Okay.
And they cannot, they don't have enough seats for the member towns. So they've completely stopped. So Boylston's not a member town and you had to be part of the formation of Assabet to be a member town.
Right.
So there are no seats at Assabet for anybody but member town.
Well, but I think that any case.
You might have some existing.
Existing, existing seats. So you're just talking about the existing seats.
And how much is it gonna cost to bust them there?
But just, but just.
Yeah.
And if anyone graduates, so it goes down.
And if we have any one like going to agricultural school or any of those other tuitions that are not in your regular budget.
Yeah, but just for clarity, there, there are seats available possibly for students that are in Boston, even though they're not a member community, but it's not at the ninth grade. So there might be an opening that they'll have in grade. So I just want to be clear about that, right? So it, it, it's first member communities first and then others go in there. Um, but they have more of a chance, and I've had meetings, right? Based on, I think, school committee's request, um, and they'll, they'll, they might have an opening in tenth grade.
Yeah.
It's, it's harder for a kid to move maybe from Tohonto, but there is an opportunity for them, so just for clarity.
Your best guess, you know, I understand that those things could happen and we wouldn't know.
That's gonna get to, do we have any requests? So it should come through our superintendent first. And there's, I believe there's an April first deadline.
Yeah.
For those.
Yeah, I, I'll, we'll have to check with, we serve the, the high school principal and the guidance councils as well too.
Do you, do you have a sense of what the Boylston population is right now at Assabet? The, the ten, eleven, twelve?
Yeah, I don't.
I mean, given our tuition this year was two hundred twenty-three thousand, it's roughly. Oh, I thought I was gonna say twenty per, oh, twenty thousand.
Twenty-two thousand per person, give or take.
Exactly, so ten kids, that's.
Do you not have a number? Do they don't give you a number when they come to present to you? How many?
Yeah, um, we have the number, the number, um, last year was thirty-seven out of Berlin, this year coming up is forty-four.
Okay.
Wow.
So.
I'm sure they would tell you how many of our kids are there.
Yeah, yeah, oh, absolutely.
Yeah, no, we can reach out to them.
We just don't have that information, but it's a great question.
My, my reason for asking Al is that they don't have to just reach out to Assabet.
For your permission.
That there may be another voc school that other kids have applied to that you're still gonna be at the hook for. So you might make sure we reach out to them as well.
Right.
So if Al has an application and has approved it, which he has to do before April first, um, we need to know if, I don't know what, you, you mentioned potential ag. I don't know if Assabet has an ag, but which is, which is the one that has an ag.
No, it's Norfolk, we said.
Yeah, Norfolk, so you might have a student. We had the same thing with Smith Vocational in Western Mass.
And Norfolk is quite a bus trip.
Oh, it was, that was an expense.
I have not received any applications to it.
Yeah, they have to.
Oh, wow.
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
And I, I do want to, this is the time to tell you that, as you know, we hit our cap last year.
Yep.
We are, you know, hands are tied. Estimated new growth of three hundred and seventy-five thousand means you guys have five hundred thousand to work with for increases on everything.
Total, and does that not capital though?
Um, I think it's Tohonto capital.
That's what I, it's, you, you, you keep Tohonto capital in the.
Yeah.
Operating assessment.
Yeah.
But not the debt.
I, you know, I was trying to look through and figure that out.
It can't be the debt, because the debt, your piece, the debt is like.
Although the debt wasn't right last year, you're saying.
So Mary, give him the number that works the shift.
So, I'll tell you what.
Yeah, I'm not sure, Megan.
I think Boylston takes a, uh, I'm sitting with Karen. Thank you. A little different approach on this, and, and we build up the town budget and we look at our revenues. So one of the key things for Berlin this year is our new growth is estimated at two hundred thousand and that's a push, according to our assessor. We are each year losing revenue out of Solomon Pond Mall. So Berlin, the, the old Sears store and the movie theater are the only parts of the mall that are in Berlin. So we have a, we have an assessment, tax assessment against the mall property overall and then against Sears and so on. So Sears has been in bankruptcy for a while. It's not been easy. And every year we get an abatement filed. And last couple of years, we've gone to tax court on it. So I actually have the numbers. So our revenue in Berlin is dropping. And I think it's really important for whoever's tuning into this to understand that it's, it's an increasingly difficult position. Now, Karen and Boylston have done something very smart, which is to say, we put our numbers together, this is what we can do, right? Um, if you look at fiscal twenty-five, Boylston had the same message, five hundred thousand, yeah?
Yes, it was, yep, last year.
And, and after all the dust settled into two town meetings in Berlin, Berlin ended up funding eight hundred and thirty-two thousand. Now, here's the problem with that. Berlin, Berlin's population is three-fifths of Boylston. Our student population is roughly a third. And, you know, if you were, and then when you take the, the regional agreement for the district, right? That regional agreement, these numbers, you can argue, like, you had the five-year running with the foundation amount. Okay, there's another piece in that formula that says, uh, to run with the actual population in the three schools.
That is transportation reimbursement.
No, it's, it's, I'll pull it out for you, Aaron. It's not.
Yes, it'd be interesting.
So, and then you take, you average those, you do another percentage, right? So, so thumbnail, thumbnail this thing. With those numbers, Berlin's contribution last year, with Boylston anchoring at five hundred thousand, Berlin should have come in at two hundred fifty, three hundred thousand. And we came in at eight hundred and thirty-two thousand. And we can't do that to our taxpayers again. We gotta, you know, Aaron, and I say this, uh, let me, let me pull out, you've got.
Yeah, I'd be interested, so I've, I think you missed some of the slides where I talked about, I went into the regional agreement and I, each component we calculate.
Yep.
I pulled out the calculating process, so there may be.
Yeah, here we go.
So does it contradict itself?
Blah, blah, blah.
So there is a, an operating, there's a, there is a, a section on calculating the budget, then there is an appendix one.
Right, on the transportation.
No, well, the appendix one covers chapter seventy and tran, and seventy-one. And then the main body covers minimum local contribution.
Section D. That's something to draw on.
Should we do this offline, then you guys can?
Well, I, I can, I can thumbnail it. The formula has four components. Um, in fact, I got it in an email right here, because I sent it over to Kristen Rubin and the.
So the increase, Boylston's increase was eight thirty-two, is that what you said last year?
Because Karen's. Berlin, Berlin's increased dollar figure last year.
For operating.
I just spoke with the town administrator. Was eight hundred, and we had essentially no capital last year, very, 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 so it's pretty much all operating, eight hundred and thirty-two thousand.
They gave like a couple hundred thousand for capital for the school.
So you stopped shot near, up here in the number. Just putting that out there.
Let's.
Because we don't, we don't have a number. I, what I'm trying to tell you is we're looking at a ten percent tax increase if we take the numbers out of the version two budget. And that, that's not feasible, right? So we have dropping revenues, we're not, you know, we're not getting new growth.
Understood.
And it's, it's simply not feasible. Now, one of the issues, we're, we're having trouble, here we go. Here's the formula, regional agreement, section D one, grades six through twelve. You take the town total. And this is, um, this is to Tohonto.
Yep.
Yeah, this formula goes to Tohonto. So they bring in the mass foundation, but then they average the actual numbers for Tohonto and this foundation. And then you take that and then you look back three years on the town numbers.
So it was a five-year moving average.
That's maybe the state. The regional agreement said you look back three years plus last year. So it's really four years. Yeah, it's here, but I'm not finding.
Where is it in the regional agreement?
All right, well, do we, should we do that off?
Yeah.
Cause, uh, hold on.
I haven't seen that. So I'd like to see it.
And also it's 110, so I just wanna be respectful of other.
Megan, to your, to your point.
I would like to see that after.
To your point, um, what I'm asking Erin, if you could do, is take a look at the fiscal 25 budget numbers. So you gave us with a lot of caveats, a mid-year report.
Yes.
And I and one of the parents that's very engaged took a look at it. And for example, we looked at district-wide expenses. Here's a total here, 1.3 million and change. And then a portion of each of that was allocated to the three schools. Here's the deal, just the budget column, which even if you've had messy accounting and, you know, posting this year, the budget numbers ought to be okay, right? So you take that total, then you take the three allocations to the three schools. They don't add up to the same number. The three allocations do not add to this number. And when I was working with this parent.
Okay.
That parent, that number in his calculation showed 23% of the district expenses going to Tohonto with the remainder split between the two elementary schools. And you and I spoke, it's supposed to be 25, 25, 50.
Yes.
It is not in the budget. So what that means is that the budget drove an assessment that's wrong for the three schools and the three, and the, and the two towns. And, and so if you base your 26 numbers on that 25 budget, you got, you got baked in errors.
So, so I, I really can't, I really can't speak to what was done in fiscal 25.
Sure.
But one of the things to recognize is, A, the budget doesn't relate perfectly to assessments, right? There's, there's chapter 70, there's chapter, you know, all of the other pieces in accordance that get split out. So chapter 70 and chapter 71 are split differently in that equation by student counts that move. Um, they understand that 23%, I'm not sure where that comes from, where that came from in fiscal 25. The, the challenge that we talked about is that last year, um, which is why we're trying to be really proactive about it this year, is that there were decisions made on the floor of the Berlin Town Meeting related to assessments. Correct? Am I correct in that? That were never captured in an actual budget. So, 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 so there were agreements made that did not result in a voted budget by the school committee. So then, um, when, when Desi became involved, I, I wasn't, Al and I weren't here. We weren't aware that that had occurred. We had a budget in the system that was the best we could work with. I had five separate copies of the budget in different stages because five different hands had, had been on the budget at different stages and they all had different formats. But what was, what was actually agreed to a town meeting through what was not a vote, right? So Desi did not see that as a legal vote. So whatever happened at that town meeting, um, they didn't recognize. So when we revoted the budget, we had school committee vote what was in the system because that's what we, we were six months into the year almost.
Right.
And we had to at least hold on. We knew there were gonna be some holes. We knew the actual budget was much higher than what the, what the assessments ended up being, just by virtue of it. But we had to have a budget for Desi and we don't have another budget that is accurate, more accurate to those assessments. So I, I mean, I, I unfortunately, I unfortunately can't undo the decisions that were made on the town floor meeting and undo the fact that a vote wasn't taken. The goal here is we're having these conversations and I'm really saying that we as partners in this, right? Need to commit to whatever school committee votes on the 11th. Great, we can, you know, it may be higher than you want. We're not gonna get angry. We're not gonna bang our shoes on the table. But we're all gonna come back to the table and we're gonna say, okay, where do we need to be? And we may have to have some conversations about how we get there. Um, I'm happy to. To sit down on the nitty gritty. How that's being done this year. I would read through, I provided, I don't know, I, 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 if, if I need to, a little education on a, a component of the regional agreement, I'm happy to take it because I thought I had it, but maybe there's something I'm missing.
And everything he just said, through the department education, I believe, I think that was initiated from the town of Berlin, right? That said, we, we wanna take a look at this. Um, so we met as a group. Um, Berlin was obviously very involved with it. And what he just said was memorialized and, and sent letters to the town of Berlin as well too, right? So here it all is, here's what we need to do and here's we need to go to make it, to make it correct. And we just recently, and I'm not sure if Berlin's received their letter yet, um, we met again with the department education and they, they said to us, this is the right way to move. This is the path they should be going forward. So that vote that school committee took in December is the direction that was initiated from, from Berlin to the department education that, that we brought to their attention and did that. So that's where we're at.
I've heard it. I've, I've seen the correspondence on it. Two, two points. The towns voted. That's what they're authorized to spend.
Yeah.
Full stop.
Sure.
Okay, so it's a bit living in. Expect the budget to be something more than what the towns voted. And Desi cannot argue with that, I don't think. I mean, we can have that conversation. So that's a real simple fact.
Yep.
Okay, and, um, and so.
We, we get that. We needed a number. We needed a budget.
It was just the budget. They didn't change the assessment.
Okay, so Megan, I have a question, you know, for the school committee in the district. Can you go back and vote that again on fiscal 25? Number one and number two, I take all of that as a given and I'm sorry that you're dealing with that. But when I look at the plugged in budget numbers for fiscal 25, there are clear errors. Number one and number two, when I look at what's expended at mid-year, I know that you gave the caveat that this particular report, there's, you know, there's errors in it. But if you look at what was expended at mid-year, I, I, I find it hard to believe that we would impact teacher staffing. If you look at these numbers in fiscal 25. So my ask to you is to go back and in particular where we know the district agreement said allocate this way or at a minimum, you can look at district-wide expenses and say, why is it that the three amounts allocated to the school and you add them together? That's a bigger number than this number, huh? All right? So if you're using those fiscal 25 numbers, if you're saying we need to apply, I know we have increased insurance costs. I know we have increased transportation costs. Yep. But how do you allocate them? And, and it's a question I think I asked you, Erin, at the end of the night back in December. Is what does it cost to run the school right now? And, and, and the reason I'm asking it, I know I say this all the time and it, and it's actually really true. I'm a huge fan of public schools. I want us to have the money to do things to do. But we cannot ask these small towns to do things unless it's justified. And, and I'm sorry, when I look at this, this budget and I see those kinds of errors and I say, well, if you're driving, I know, Al, you came in with the aspiration to, to do zero budget. And, and for lots of reasons, I understand why we're doing what we're doing, okay?
Because, because of the, no, 25.
The exercise I'm, I'm asking about is not a huge exercise, is to look at, look at the first column on this report out of the financial system and maybe at the second column, are we doing okay with booking our expenditures, right? Can we actually look at that and see if we can get to a better place for the towns? And Karen's told us where Boylston is and I'm telling you where I'd like to see Berlin be, based on our pupil population, all the formulas, if you boil them.
Could you tell us what you want?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I missed that. What did you say you wanted, like 500,000 or?
I'm not authorized to come in with the numbers. But what I'm gonna tell you, Megan, is we have two-thirds of the pupils and our, and our population is three fifths of Boylston. So I think that if Boylston's coming in at 500,000, I think Berlin ought to be between 200 and 300,000.
Okay.
Increase over last year. That's, now, I'm not speaking for FinCom, I'm not speaking for the select board. I'm not speaking for the town administrator, administrator. I'm, I'm just telling you from my studying of the regional agreement and, and, and just the numbers, you know, we didn't, Al, Erin, we didn't talk about pupil numbers at all in this budget presentation. I think we need to look at it and look at the regional agreement because both Boylston needs the fairness of following the agreement, so does Berlin. So, so can we do that? And I, you know, I apologize, it's late in the, in the process, but.
So I, I guess.
So again, I, I, I can't speak to how, how district-wide costs were allocated in 25. I, I just, I mean, I, I can, the, one of the problems is because they are blended in to the school budgets. So this is another reason why I feel like district-wide costs should be called out. So if you go, for example, to the individual school slides, slides 10 and 11.
Yep.
You will see that the district share is very explicitly called out. So the Berlin Memorial Operating Assessment, 26 BMS District Share is 418,535. If you then go to Boylston.
Sorry, sorry, which one will be on there?
So I'm sorry, the second slide, so second slide, second line, so.
I wanna see under your hand.
Yes.
You're, you're, there, that's what I wanna see. I'm on 11.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yep, 11's fine as well.
Simple question.
Yeah, those two are the same, actually.
You will see, you will see that, that page 10 and page 11 are identical for that.
Okay.
Right? So that is 25, 25. And then if you go to Tohonto, you will see, that's slide 12. You will see the district share is 837,070, which is the 50% piece. So again, why I wanna call out, when, when I go, and I'll be honest, when I go into the actual budget, I see, so Al's salary, for example, is in three pieces. My salary is in three pieces. When I go into the nitty gritty detail, I can find line items where, uh, the Berlin piece and the Boylston piece are there. But, I'm sorry, the Berlin, the Tohonto piece are there, but the Boylston piece is missing. And I find the same thing. So at some point, someone made cuts, right? And they didn't appreciate that this is a three-legged stool.
Exactly.
Right?
Yep.
The district office is a three-level stool. They arbitrarily cut something. So this further goes to some of those challenges.
Yeah.
Um, you know, there are also things, so we are now a full region. It looks to me like there are certain costs related to being a region that were still allocated only to Tohonto, right? So they need to be allocated to all three members of, all three legs of that stool, right? So I can't, again, I can't speak to how they did it in fiscal 25. I can try to dig for that on top of other things. I, I, I will. I, I mean, but I, I'm gonna do the best I can to give you a budget that's in line with the regional agreement. And if there's something in the 26 budget that calls out something that I'm not addressing, I'm happy to try to address that.
And we had the auditors come in looking at previous rate and, and see what their findings are. But here's where we're at and here's where we're moving forward for fiscal 26. So I think that point that Aaron just said is huge, right? If there's something we're missing for fiscal year 26, that's what we're controlling, right? In the 25, we're still trying to work it out. We're still trying to figure that all out and using the, the auditors as well too. We, there's some things that just don't match.
Sure. And, and my point is to the extent that, that you're building the budget driven off fiscal 25. I think, I don't know how you can do it when you see things like I saw, and it's not the encumbrances, which you pointed out. You know, mid-year was crazy. But the actual budget numbers are really kinda out of whack and out of whack with respect to the, the, the three schools and how things are intended to be allocated.
We are not just taking fiscal 25 numbers and carrying them over to 26. We are, I always use that as a baseline. So we have all of our payroll figures. I go through every single person. Every single person, I have a spreadsheet that encapsulates, encapsulates every single person. I look at prior years for, you know, it's hard for me to look at prior years for every little $500 item.
No, no.
But for example, one of this, the, the pieces of savings we have this year is, I wanna say it's over $50,000 in oil at Tohonto.
Sure.
It appears to me that they had over budgeted for oil. If I go back multiple years and I look at an average, I see that. So I have looked at every major item that might change year to year significantly. You know, I, I have to assume that if there's $500 in pencils in line item, we might need 500 again. It's hard for me to, you know, go through every single item. But the items that, that might change, that might increase, I follow trends. I look at that. Um, another comment I've made is we looked at substitute use, right? Substitute use, and we talked about this in other meetings, has shot up. So that couldn't stay where it was. I had to increase it to Hondo based on utilization. You don't have a choice but to spend that. I did meet with Lisa. So in this version of the budget, we had taken it up to about $67,500 in version two at least. This version backs that down to about 50,000. Lisa Segarra and I have met and she is gonna try to manage that down using, um, it can be hard to do, but using internal resources. That might mean that an assistant principal substitutes in a classroom or the principal substitutes in a classroom. Or we try to use a paraprofessional at a little bit lower cost. It can be challenging, but we're gonna push to meet that. We have, we've established some stretch goals for ourselves for, and, and put them into the budget. So as you know, we have 12, um, uh, agency paraprofessionals district-wide. Um, we've committed to eliminate all of those by next year. So that's about 300-some thousand dollars in savings.
Yeah, we heard that. We've heard that a couple times and yeah, that's, these are good initiatives.
The unfortunate part is those were not budgeted into the fiscal 25 budget. So those are all literally budgeted at half their cost. So when we're looking at where we're gonna end up this year, Berlin does have the preponderance of those. So the costs associated with that are going, you will see, drop into Berlin's cost profile, right? So it's a challenge and, and we have, we've eliminated those. We're gonna do every single thing we can. We'll post, um, not only on School Spring.
Already hiring people, it's not, it's not ready to do. So all of that, and the only other part, and I wanna be careful because I know this is a school committee meeting, right? And I know we're going way off.
I think we're getting a little off. I know it's 1:27, so I'm gonna give one more minute and then we're gonna kind of rein it all back in.
So just, just note, I, 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 I think, just gotta be careful, the wording, it's that, I'm not really sure the wording you use. But it's certainly, we're, we're sitting with each department and going through line item by line item, every principal, every department, looking exact, exactly where they are. So you, you need to know how careful and precise we're being with this stuff.
I, I got full confidence and I want, the transparency that we're getting right now has been really excellent. We haven't seen anything for two years.
The only other part I'm, I'm, I'm asking for you, and again, I appreciate this is a school committee meeting and we went in front of FinCom, we went in front of your meetings and stuff like that. So if you're looking for things like that, what we're really trying to avoid is the gutters, right? So if there's something that you're looking for, I know you're not, I'm just, I'm just saying that. Like, we wanna make sure that we're, we're, we're providing what you're looking for to the best that we can right now based on where we came into this situation. So that's the point of us going to your town meetings, you go into your select board meetings, go in your FinCom. So if there's a level of detail that you're looking for something like that, we, we, we would hope that you'd share them during that time, right? Cause we were just with you a couple of weeks ago, I think, that we met with you, wasn't it? Two weeks, three weeks ago?
Yeah, I didn't have the bandwidth to do the analysis on these numbers. And then there is the caveat that Erin clearly gave that there's some errors in here. But I was trying to look at the columns that I thought wouldn't have been affected as much. And those would be the, the budget numbers and the expended numbers. And they're telling an interesting story that, 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 for example, classroom teachers budgeted for Berlin Moir, 1.6 million in sum and expended at mid-year was 620,000. So, uh, shouldn't it be closer to 50% of that 1.6 million? But it isn't and I don't, you see, these are the questions.
Starts September 1st, so it's not quite mid-year.
So you think it's three months? It is three months. Well, that's helpful because, right, but I didn't, I, I wasn't able to do this analysis until now. Until a couple of weeks ago, so.
Okay, sorry, cause it's 1:30.
Challenges we have through salaries.
I know, he has a hard time.
It's really not our job.
That's right.
Thank you.
I wanna just make sure. And you're really getting into detail, detail, detail.
We tell you how much money we can afford to you.
I, I can say, and I wanna, and I wanna just go back to what you're saying. And I, some people might not appreciate this, but our, our budget's the school committee, right? And we're like the Vatican, right? We're telling you this is the money we need to run our buildings, right? That's the analogy we use as regional school, school superintendents. And, and then you give us the money we need and then we, we, we need to do the best we can. We're telling you this is what we need to, to run the school successfully and we've shopped up pencils from version one, version two to where we are now. But know that every one of these decisions that we're making is gonna impact the schools somewhere along the way. Impact the amount of classrooms we have as well. So just know that. But we're, we're doing the very best we can with the information we have for this year and trying to be my, the infamous word transparentest can be to giving this information. But honestly, sometimes when you give all that information, then people are down here looking at like, okay, this one point.
We're lost in the weeds.
That's right. And that's, that's, that's our world to try to figure that out as best as you can.
Yeah, at a, at a high level, I'm really, a lot of my questions have to do with the regional agreement. I'm really focused on applying it because the, the costs that go out to the two entry schools are a little easier thing to look at. But I, I, I think we all know there's errors in the baseline and if we're looking at a change from baseline.
Yeah, we gotta fix those.
We gotta, uh, yeah, there's, there's, I'm sorry, but how do you take it, how do you take it to the voters, huh?
We can, we'll fix them. We'll work on that offline.
Yeah. Okay. So I think this was helpful because we found out we have about 500,000 to play with in Boylston. Looking at page 14, the operating assessment, we're at 495, 746. Now that doesn't include, like we talked about Karen, I believe the Tohonto, Erin, you're gonna wanna make note of this because I don't know if you knew this. But Tohonto capital, I don't think it's the debt. I think you guys have something separate for the debt, but double check on that and let us know. I think it's, cause the debt's like a million dollars.
Right.
The Tohonto capital, I think, goes into the operating assessment in Boylston. So that 500,000 that she said, that she, it has to include the Tohonto capital. The Boylston Elementary, it's whatever, it's like what Mary said, they have the X amount of free cash to spend and X amount goes to the school.
And vocational.
And vocational, they need the vocational, yep.
We'll get that.
For Berlin, this was actually very helpful, Mary. You said between 200 to 300,000.
No, 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 don't, don't go to the bank on that money. I'm just reacting to Karen's comment. That is not an official Berlin number. So don't even go there.
I get it, but we're at. Yep, I get it, but we're at 575 right now. So what you're telling me is that is probably a bit too high. So, what you're telling me is that is probably a bit too high.
Sure, and when we do the calculations, we're looking at a one point two million increase. That's what we, that's what we sat last week when Scott Schultz did...
Yeah, I think we need to fix our numbers before we really think on these.
So, this assessment number is accurate, because...
That's pretty accurate. Where are we at?
This is page thirteen, so when you're looking at the change, it's the budget that he was saying, isn't, what you're looking at, Mary, before that sheet, you had, that's the budget, and I agree with you, it's not correct. But the assessment number, you guys are paying that, that's accurate.
I don't think ours is accurate.
Well, we can look at it and tie it out.
Like, like you said, I need to see the capital and...
Capital and all that, absolutely, you're going to look at.
Yeah.
Are you, if you're on page thirteen, we're only looking at twenty-six numbers, not twenty-five.
If you look at the F Y twenty-five column, there's nothing in it.
Seven million, eight hundred thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars?
That number.
That's your total assessment.
Erin is saying that's what you guys pay, are paying us this year.
Yes.
Does that match what's on your warrant, the seven point...
So, you guys would have to look and tie that out, and so that right there, this calculation on this bottom of the page, I get it has, doesn't have any detail, we're, we're just talking high level.
Yes.
Just saying, so when we're going into this vote, we know, are we in alignment? Are we way off? Are we a little off? It's, this is, I'm guessing, relatively close to accurate, five seventy-five, four thirty-nine, that's the increase where we're standing. Berlin just operating, that doesn't include any of the capital, Tejant capital, I don't know if you guys include Tejant capital in the assessment like Boylston does.
So... So, if I can also share the reason those are blacked out, again, feeds into that vote taken on the town, the, the floor of town meeting, I don't know, because that didn't change in accordance with a voted budget, I don't know where that money came out of, right? So, did it come out of the BMS assessment? Did it come out of, obviously, the MLC would have stayed the same, but did it come out of the Tejant money? There, there's no, there's no record of where that came in and out of.
Well, we should be able to figure it out with ours.
Might be able to, yes.
There is in what the town...
You can back into it.
There is in what the town is voting for, but the allocation, debt and capital didn't change, the operating costs, on the June seventeen vote, the school committee did take a vote on, on Berlin Memorial, and that number is not the number that the district is working with today.
Well, they, they took a vote, like an official vote, a legal vote?
There was a posted school committee meeting on the seventeenth, prior to the town meeting, same, same for...
But adjustments were made on the floor of town meeting.
Adjustments were made by the school committee vote ahead of going into the floor of the town meeting.
Okay.
So, the, so the school committee and the finance committee and the select board met at six o'clock, and then we went into town meeting, I don't know, maybe it was an hour, hour and a half later.
The amendment made by the chair of the FinCom was not the number that the school committee voted on, it was an error, it was an innocent error, he did not mean to, his intent was to have the same number as the school committee, but because everybody was working so quickly, that number was not the correct number. And that's where this whole situation...
And we had to provide all that information, Department of Education, and they checked all that stuff.
So, so my challenge is, is why can't the school committee stay with what the town voted?
We did do that. That's what we did. His number was lower, though, than what we agreed on, so it...
If, if the town...
His error was in our favor, not yours, so we did stick with that number, because that was what Kristin had said that we wanted to do.
Yeah, yeah, my...
Do you remember that?
It was, it was a split of the difference between the ask and the make-up.
So, just, just be careful, right? We want to be careful, like, the, the way that it was voted, like, what Megan just said was exactly the way it took place.
It was too rushed, it was an innocent mistake, that was the number that was motioned, did not tie out to what the school committee voted on, they were two different numbers, and it was no one's fault, it was due to rushed error. And then, what happened was when they were trying to do the assessment letter to send it back to the town, they didn't, they, they wa, you know, the person that was in Erin's job was reviewing the video, and then reviewed the school committee minutes, and it was two different numbers, and that's where he was like, what do we use? And then they worked with Kristin, and Kristin, I think, was involved in that.
I mean, I think it was all memorialized in that letter that was sent.
And so then, that's why we had to get Desi involved. And that was, that was one of the things, so, anyways, all right, so, I think this is helpful, though, at least from what I'm hearing from you, is that if this is accurate, I understand your concerns about accuracy. Yep, so we need to go back and tie this out, and, you know, I, Erin and I are going to have a little bit of a working session this week to kind of go, but then, then we still have a little bit of cut to make here.
Yeah, that...
Is that, that's what I'm here, I'm just trying to, I want some feedback, so that we're not going into this meeting blind, because we're really trying to be in alignment. Do you know, guys, what it...
I do, but I know she's not in a position, I, I think she doesn't want to be backed in.
No, I'm not, I'm, I'm not, I'm not trying to say, Mary, give me a number, but...
But I think in general, a seven point four percent increase is probably higher than palatable in your town.
Yes.
Yeah, we recognize that, and have said that since the beginning.
So, even if we vote this, then it'll be with the intent to perhaps clean a few things up down the road.
Well, these are, they're hard realities, so...
Yeah, no, I got it.
Right.
And there are a number of errors and erroneous assumptions from before, I'm going to repeat, what is clear is what the towns voted for.
So, we got to see if this seven point eight million ties out, yep.
The dollar amount the towns voted for is very clear, and...
And that's what you're paying us?
Well, I, I assume so, but I, I have to go back and check that, the total assessment number, I forget what I've heard on that, but, but...
That should be what they're paying, is the number that was the town was voting, because that was it.
Please check that, somehow I have an erroneous number, I'll change that. If you have the, the BMS assessment numbers and the Tejant above MLC numbers, I'll fill in those blanks, they just need to add up to the, the money we're getting.
Right, and then the disconnect, as we have our conversations between the town and the district, has to do with some of that, and, right, that's, that's...
Wait, what do you mean by that? Say that again?
Well, well, there's two things, there's also assess, assessment percentages, and there's operating, there's actual budget percentage, and those are different, but they're, depending on the, the words you use, the definitions, the financial definitions, you're going to get different numbers. But my understanding is the, the school committee voted in December on that number that was higher than what the two towns had voted for, with respect to...
That's correct, yes.
The budget, not the assessment.
Yes.